Good evening. This regular meeting of November 14th, 2016 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call please.
Mr. Barton.
Here.
Mr. Byteam.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Prohaska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Seagurt.
Here.
Ms. Whitman.
Here.
Thank you. We're joined this evening with a group from Eisenhower Elementary. And Andy Ferguson, do they chant Cubs Win before or after the Bledge of Allegiance? I'm not sure, but we're thrilled to have you with us tonight.
I'm Katie Perryard. I'm the gifted and talented instructor at Eisenhower and Marshall Schools. And we've brought a portion of our leadership team with us today, probably about a third of us today with us. And these are our third, fourth, and fifth graders. They're going to introduce themselves to you.
Owen Lawler.
Claire Odefy.
Shay McDonald.
Graham Allers.
Ella Kraus.
Eva Robb.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Thank you.
Wow.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on October 10th and the strategic plan update on October 24th, 2016 as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on October 10th and the strategic plan update on October 24th, 2016 as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Board salutes.
Yes, Mr. President, I'm pleased to announce and share with those listening in that the Mental Health America of Dubuque County has awarded the Dubuque Community School District a special honor. This is for initiatives that support the mental health and well-being of all students and in recognition of the fact that Dubuque Community School District has provided significant leadership and resources in the emotional, social, and educational well-being of all students to support reaching their fullest potential. So congratulations to the district for that award.
Great. Thank you.
I have a board salute for our fall sports and the high school. All the fall sports have come to an end and I'd just like to highlight a few of their accomplishments. The senior high school men and women cross-country team and the Hempstead men and women cross-country team both qualified for state. And the Hempstead volleyball team qualified for state. The men's golf team went to state, ended up in seventh place with Louis Sojhaus as third place overall individually. The senior women's swimming qualified 11 swimmers and one diver for state. Ellie Shear was ninth overall for diving and Emma Sass was sixth in the 50 free. So congratulations for our fall sports and we know activities are very important to our kids.
Thank you.
I have one as well. Kudos to Reese Trapeau, student at Tablebound Elementary School who won first place in the nationwide art show presented by American Printing House for the Blind. Reese's painting called Four Seasons was also included in an auction and there was a bidding war for it. Reese and his family were able to attend a celebration event in Kentucky to receive the award. So congratulations to Reese on a job well done.
Great. Thank you.
I have a board salute as well. Kudos to Barney Dear from Buildings and Grounds and Chuck Filer from the warehouse who lead the district's efforts in securing items from NARE. It's an organization that offers the district access to thousands of brand-new, high-quality products for a fraction of retail cost with a small membership fee. Barney and Chuck have saved the district hundreds of thousands of dollars through their strategic acquisition of items, which I've been told includes diversions and distractions to get the items. So thanks to these gentlemen. And the entire Buildings and Grounds staff are always seeking ways to maximize the district resources. So thanks to those guys.
Yeah, for the benefit of those. It seems like an inside joke. If you were at the committee meeting, you would hear about the great length these guys go to procure equipment and furniture on behalf of the district at basically what is a large garage sale. And so you can imagine a very popular garage sale and these two guys have got a system down whereby they divert the rest of the group's attention and go right to the gems of the sale. And they've done a tremendous job on behalf of the district. So we certainly want to thank them for that.
Dumpster diving.
There's some stuff that they saw value in that apparently somebody else didn't.
And it's quality stuff.
And it's very, it's high-quality stuff.
It's good stuff out there.
It's good. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So on behalf of the fellow board members, I would at this time invite any member of the audience to step to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern. Please begin by stating your name and address and we'd certainly appreciate it if you could keep the comments to something in and around three minutes so that we can give everybody an opportunity to speak. We ask that you remember that Iowa law prevents us from discussing specific employees or their job performance and we'd appreciate it if you refrained from using names of employees in your comments. The board's role is to listen to your comments tonight, but a response or action will not be forthcoming if the topic is not an agenda item. So if you have thoughts to share about any items that are included as topics for tonight's meeting, we certainly would invite those at the same time. So we certainly appreciate you being here and appreciate your support of the school district.
I'd like to share where you want to go.
Sorry. Yep. That microphone is on, so.
Okay. I'll try to be brief. Thank you, Board Superintendent. I really appreciate the opportunity to come. I know as when I visited with Superintendent earlier, I was...
Can you give your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jody Lockwood. And address too?
Address.
2215 Samantha Drive. I just want to thank you for your willingness to hear from parents. And I also, you know, with the newspaper and all the things that have been going around, I also just want to reassure the board and any teachers that it's really that I'm coming with a legitimate care for the students. It's a discussion or a debate about content, but not in any way a debate about the competency of a teacher. The teachers and administration I have worked with have been open, professional, and I do not doubt their love for kids. And I don't doubt the decisions that even though I disagree with them, I don't doubt that they're really trying to do what they think is best. And so it's really a discussion about content that I want to have. I really would like to move it away from criticisms of particular teachers because I love the teachers in Dubuque Community School. I owe them a great debt. I'm grateful for them. And so I would like to strike that kind of tone as you, you know, in the future consider the policy I'm putting forward. And it just is really out of a concern of what's best for kids. And I think we're in a changing time right now with kids having access to not just media but literature that maybe has not been so prevalent and content that's not been so prevalent for them to see. And it's changed. And I feel like it necessitates a conversation between parents. And so I'll just, I'll try to stay brief here. The policy that I'm putting forward tonight is that Dubuque Community School employees will make every effort to accomplish curriculum goals without exposing kids to obscene pornographic or harmful materials. And the terms obscene, pornographic, and harmful, I am borrowing right out of the Child Internet Protection Act and the legal definitions therein. And so I'm trying to borrow what the Supreme Court has actually upheld as protections for youth. And First Amendment rights for minors are different than those for adults and there's a reason. And it's, there's a whole lot of research out there that supports this, that it's good for our kids to not expose them to that content. But there is a caveat like there is with SIPA where if there is an instance where school personnel feel the literary value of the text overrides the concerns about its inclusion of obscene, harmful, or harmful material, they will notify parents of the specific nature of the obscene or harmful material, the justification for its use, and require an adult signature similar to those currently required for viewing an R-rated movie in school. So it's kind of piggybacking on a current policy for movies that are R-rated, that we would adopt the same policy because my experience has been I was unaware of content that my son was reading and it was very explicit. And at the very least, I want to know, as a parent, I want to know. And I feel like there's a lot of justification for that. And I'd like for parents to be informed of this policy if it's adopted. I would say just, I know I don't have much time here, but my primary concern is there is not an objective standard in place to screen literary material currently. And it's not screened specifically for obscene, pornographic, or harmful material. We do have that material. Some teachers make use of it and it's certainly in our libraries. But what I'm saying is I don't think parents are aware. I don't think they know that. I think there's, you know, we signed that SIPA at the beginning of the year and I think there's this assumption that those sort of screenings are in place in literary terms as well, and they're not. And so I would like, I think this policy could address that. Also, in reviewing literary terms, there is currently not in place for literature, a screen for what is considered legally obscene, pornographic, and harmful. And recommending sources like Common Core and other sources may very well give books that have pornographic, obscene, and harmful material that, you know, according to the SIPA definitions, they may well give them five out of five stars. So there is not a specific screening for that kind of material. And we need an objective standard. The good news is that I really am grateful because I feel like you are the ones who have the power to enact a policy so that parents could be informed, but also to put an objective standard out there that in general, as a general rule, Dubuque Community School does not use obscene, pornographic, or harmful materials to accomplish our curriculum goals. And I would love it if you could do that. I'm asking for you to do that. I would encourage you that you do have Iowa law on your side, you have school district law on your side, and you have the Supreme Court on your side because this type of content is not protected content. And it's actually something the government says, federal government holds at the Supreme Court level is something kids should be protected from. So I would encourage you to wholly look at this option and the benefits it would have for our kids. So in conclusion, the missing piece really is the policy. I'm asking for a standard. I think it's good, I really do think it's good for all of us. It helps us have this conversation with parents. It still leaves room for literary elbow room if they say, you know, what about this? I know I talked with a teacher once and she talked about a Shakespeare piece that would maybe be kicked out because of that. And we talked about that. So I think it provides a satisfying solution for both staff and parents. So thank you very much for considering this. I have a copy of the policy I'd like to pass out. I have other materials I'd be happy to forward you in the future if it would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. My name's Andrew DeWitt, 15368 Stacy Court. She took about six minutes, so I'll take about one. You guys opened with a wonderful quote saying our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. We're talking about safety. We're talking about keeping the pornographic, harmful materials from the children. That's really all it is. We already do it with R-rated movies. We already have a requirement that teachers send a permission slip home. We're asking for the same thing for books and other materials. Thank you.
Hi, Mark Lockwood, 2215 Samantha Drive. Where's the clock for the three minutes? I'm going to practice for the presidential debate. A little too early to talk about presidential debate again, but there's a couple of things I wanted to address. As a business owner, if we talk about any of this discussion, if any of this discussion was overheard, I'd be going to court for sexual harassment. I'm not sure what this is teaching. I'm not sure the value of it. I'd like that it be explained to me as a business owner. For people that come to me, I'm going to have to train them out of this. It's my responsibility. It's my legal responsibility to make them good stewards of how to interact with each other. I'm not sure exactly the intent there, but, and I'm willing to learn, but I'm paranoid of that as a business owner. It's expensive for me. So I want to understand that value. There's other things that we need to learn in writing in business. It's very important to be, for other skills to be learned in these classes. One of the things I wanted to bring up here is, and I can pass it around to if you're interested in that, National Institute of Health has a study, and this is in 2000, so this is, this is well-known, well-documented since then, but there's a, the whole study about, and the study's about adolescent sexuality in the media. And it talks specifically more about the new media at the time, which was handheld devices, but also talks about all media engagement, whether it be TV shows or Youtubes and things like that. It was just coming out in 2000. But I also would like to include that as medias that you read because we also have access to all that media on our phones as well. Here's our summary points coming from the conclusion of this study. And this is a scientific study from the National Institute of Health that they funded. Okay? Summary points. Adolescents are exposed to many sexual images and messages on television and are almost universally presented in a positive light, similar to this book, that we brought up this situation. But again, it's not specific to a book. We're talking about policy. Presented in a positive light with little discussion of potential risks or adverse consequences of that behavior. Adolescents use media as a source of information about sex, drugs, AIDS, and violence as well to learn how to behave in relationships. So again, we're teaching them behavior from these media outreaches. Research indicates that adolescent sexuality is associated with media use. There's a direct correlation to that. So what kind of media are we making available to our youth? And what is that teaching them? Practitioners should address pre-adolescents, practitioners being the doctors, they're talking about health now, the doctors in health, should address pre-adolescent and adolescent patient use of electronic media and internet, television, R and X-rated movies when assessing the risk behavior for a thorough medical history. Are they reading this material? That is a flag to every physician out there that they need to do some testing. Parents and guardians should be encouraged to supervise adolescents' parents and guardians should be encouraged to supervise adolescent media use. Screening software to reduce inappropriate access to help teenagers to critique what they see and read in the media. That's science, okay? Now I want to shift from science because I'm an engineer by background, so I have a bachelor in science. I love science, right? The problem with science, science does not tell me what's moral. There's nothing about the science that says I have to tell you the truth. That's a moral judgment. That's what our community says. That's what our community beliefs are. And Dubuque is fabulous for that. That's why we moved to Dubuque. And when our business closed, that's why I started the business, because I love Dubuque. We have a great community that's based on our moral belief, not on science. So let me pivot to science, from science to moral. So what's our community moral values? I would think that a vast majority of our moral discussion in this town would be that sexuality is sacred. It's not an activity. It's not something to have an emotion about. It's a sacred activity between two people that brings them closer together, okay? And we can't teach that in school. I understand that. All I'm asking you is that you don't teach it against me. You don't expose my child without my knowledge to invite them into a sexual activity that we know from science is correlated with risky behavior. I, as a parent, demand to know that my child has been exposed to that so that I can teach them the moral consequences that are lifelong, let alone as a business owner, that I now have the responsibility legally for these employees that I get. Okay? I appreciate your time. I know I went over three minutes. And there ends my political presidential campaign.
Thank you.
Justin Risma, 6116 Stockwood Drive. I have a seven-year-old, five-year-old, and three-year-old at home. I'm just here to express my hope that down the road, when they're a little bit older, I'd be aware when they're reading stuff like this at school, just so I can have a good discussion with them and help them figure out what's right and wrong and what's healthy. So I support the proposed policy for obscene materials. Thank you.
Jennifer Schultz, 2523 Millstone Drive. When I was notified of the material that was shared, not only in this book, but in other books that are being presented at school and assigned to our children, I sincerely was mortified. Mortified. I know that as a parent, I need to monitor what my kids are exposed to in the media, on their smartphones, on the internet. I had no idea I needed to do that with what they were being taught at school. I support the policy that Jody has put forth. If we are to partner as parents and teachers in education, then we need to know about this obscene and filthy material when it's presented to our children. I don't think that that is asking too much. I send my kids to school so they can learn to be productive members of society, so they can take the next step from elementary school to junior high to high school and then college or the workforce. I want them to be productive members of society, not a drain on society. The material that is in some of these books is supporting illegal and immoral behavior. And not only that, but it is not going into the consequences of that behavior. STD, HIV, people dying of AIDS, overdose, people getting behind a kill when they're drunk or high, people getting behind a car when they are drunk or high and killing someone. I understand that this might bring up, actually I don't understand it. I do not understand how this could bring up good conversation in the classroom, but here's what I know. There are assumptions that are being made when we are presenting this material to our kids. They are assuming that it is not triggering something in those kids. What about kids that have been molested? What about kids that have had trouble with drugs or alcohol or pornography and then putting this material in front of them? No one can make that decision about whether this material is appropriate for those kids besides their parents. And I just feel like I was blindsided with what was being presented to my kids under the name of education. I present Jody's solution. Thank you. I want support. Thank you.
My name is Paula Apostle at 2654 Iview Circle. And I just have to thank you, Jennifer, for bringing this to light. And I think that is what is so important because I think parents are so busy, they do not have a chance or they don't have the time to look in, nor did they think they had to. And so what I have heard our kids are exposed to has made me extremely sad. I think of all the wonderful and good literature that our children could be exposed to, and they're not. And I also think, some people say it's about censorship. I don't think it's about censorship. I think it's about what's good for our children. And people say all it takes for evil to prevail is for good men to do nothing. And so I just think what you put into a child comes out of a child. You put in garbage, garbage comes out. I think we, I'm so grateful to you, Jennifer.
My name's Bryce Davis. I live at 257 Hill Street. I hadn't planned on sharing anything here this evening originally, and then I came in and I saw your mission statement, and I don't have it memorized because I just saw it. So I just kind of want to read it from back here. To develop world-class learners. That first statement is such that there has to be benchmarks. Somebody has to set standards which will actually say that yes, we are achieving that or no, we're not. And so in that process, academia sets benchmarks for that. The second part says, and citizens of character. Now for myself, I'm raising my family in a Christian biblical worldview, and that is the pretext for developing character. So when I do that with my sons, I'm the one who's responsible for putting in place the filters to interpret all of these different mediums that come to them, that are being fed to them through school, through the television, through the internet, all of those things. And I help them discover it, learn it, understand it, put it in a context, and interpret it. Is it valid? Is it good? Maybe it's healthy? Maybe it's not. I look at that as citizens of character in the context of the TH article that was just written this morning. And there were just two things that really stuck out to me in that article. The first one was how that author, the writer of that, couldn't actually explain the content, blurred it in with graphic sex. For the very reason I believe that if we actually identified bestiality and all the other pervasive sex that went on in there, rape, and normalization and pedophilia as being acceptable, this room would not be as full as it is now. There would be people standing outside those doors. And that's bothersome to me. So then in the last bit of the article, it says, in the development of character, and I know I'm just cherry picking one, but that's all the article gave me, it says Zachary Rigdon, a 2014 Hempstead graduate who now attends the University of Iowa, recalled reading the book on his own in high school. He said, excuse me, he said, concerns about the book are valid, but he feels the novel doesn't advocate bad behavior. So according to Mr. Rigdon, bestiality, thumbs up, totally fine with that. Pedophilia, totally fine with that. Rape, I have a daughter, I don't know how many of you have sons or daughters, I am not fine with that. My question for you, the board, and I know this is just one person, does having this book in your school district truly promote good citizens of character? According to Zachary Rigdon, the Dubuque Community School District has failed.
I'd just like to pass a couple of excerpts around that I was uncomfortable looking at the book. Jennifer Johnson, 15844 Sandeston Drive. I'm almost embarrassed to read these excerpts, but I really think to have an honest discussion about what's frustrating us as parents is to just read some of what was going on in this book. I'm going to start off on page 12 from the novel, as we're going to call it, and I have a hard time calling it literature, but if we want to call it a novel that's perhaps popular... popular, so be it. Page 12, "The main character Charlie accidentally walks in while his sister is having sex with a boy." And this is text right from the book. "And I opened the door to the basement, and my sister and this boy were naked. He was on top of her, and her legs were draped over either side of the couch, and she screamed at me and whispered, 'Get out, you pervert.'" Yes, he is. That's all my sister could say. On page 21, Charlie discovers masturbation. Do you know what masturbation is? I think you probably do because you're older than me, but just in case, I'm going to tell you. Masturbation is when you rub your genitals until you have an orgasm. Wow. I thought that this is those movies and in television shows when they talk about having a coffee break, that they should have a masturbation break. But then again, I think this would decrease productivity. On page 27, there was more about masturbation. I guess I forgot to mention in my last letter that it was Patrick who told me about masturbation. I guess I forgot, oops, I copied something twice. "I don't like to look at pictures. I just close my eyes and I dream about a lady that I do not know, and I try not to be ashamed. One night, I felt so guilty that I promised God that I would never do it again. So I started using blankets, but then the blankets hurt, so I started using pillows, but then the pillows hurt, so I went back to the normal way." On page 30, Charlie, also the main character, is forced to stay in his room while his brother throws a party. A boy brings a girl into the room and seduces her while Charlie is watching. And here's the text. "Every 10 minutes or so, a drunk girl or boy would stumble into my room to see if they could make out there or something. Then they would see me and they'd walk away. That is, except for this one couple. This one couple, whom I was told later were very popular and in love, stumbled into my room and asked if I minded them using it. I told them that my brother and my sister said that I was to stay here, and they asked if they could just use the room anyway with me still in it. I said, 'I didn't see why not,' so they closed the door and they started kissing, kissing very hard. After a few minutes, the boy's hand went up the girl's shirt and she started protesting. 'Come on, Dave. What? The kid's in here.' And the boy kept working up the girl's shirt. And as much as she said no, he kept working it. And the boy kept working up the girl's shirt, and as much as she said no, he kept working it. After a few minutes, she stopped protesting and he pulled her shirt off, and she had a white bra on with lace. I honestly didn't know what to do at this point. Pretty soon, he took off her bra and started to kiss her breasts. And then he put his hands down her pants and she started moaning. I think they were both drunk. He reached to take off her pants, and she started crying really hard. So he reached for his own. He pulled his pants and underwear down to his knees. 'Please, Dave, no.' But the boy just talked soft to her about how good she looked and things like that, and she grabbed his penis in her hands and started moving it." I guess I would describe this a little more nicely without, I guess, I wish I could describe this a little more nicely without using words like penis, but that's just what it was. On page 31, the boy sodomizes the girl while Charlie watches. And this is from the text. "After a few minutes, the boys pushed the girl's head down and she started to kiss his penis. She was still crying. Finally, she stopped crying because he put his penis in her mouth. And I don't think that you can cry in that position. I had to stop watching, and at that point, because I started to feel sick, but it kept going on and they just kept doing things, and she kept saying no, even when I covered my ears, I could still hear her say that." On page 44, Charlie's watching two of his friends having anal sex with each other. "When most people left, Brad and Patrick went into Patrick's room. They had sex for the first time that night. I don't want to go into detail about it because it's pretty private stuff, but I will say that Brad assumed the role of the girl in terms of where you put things. I think that's pretty important to tell you. When they were finished, Brad started to cry really hard. He had been drinking a lot and getting really stoned. No matter what Patrick did, Patrick kept crying, and Brad couldn't even let Patrick hold him, which seems rather sad to me because if I had sex with someone, I would want to hold them. Finally, Patrick just pulled up Brad's pants and said to him, 'Just pretend you've passed out.'" On page 158, there's a scene at night on a desert golf course. They're just about to do it when Parker realizes that he forgot his condoms. They're both naked on the putting green. They both want each other. There's no condom, so what do you think that happened? I don't know. They did it doggy style with one of the sandwich bags. On page 159, there was a guy named Carl Burns, and everyone called him CB. And one day, CB got so drunk at a party that he tried to fuck the host's dog. And there was this guy that was called Action Jack because supposedly he was caught masturbating at a drunk party, and at every pep rally, the kids would clap and chant, "Action Jack", clap, clap, clap. Action Jack. Page 160 describes a girl rumored to have masturbated with a hot dog. There were other stories and other names, but Sheila, who allegedly masturbated with a hot dog, and had to go to the emergency room. But the list went on and on. And the last I'm going to read is page 161. "The scene is about a park where men pick up boys to have sex with them. One night, Patrick took me to this park where men go and find each other. Patrick told me that if I didn't want to be bothered by anyone, that I should just not make eye contact. He said that eye contact is how you agree to fool around anonymously. Nobody talks. They just find places to go. After a while, Patrick saw someone he liked. He asked me if I needed any cigarettes, and when I said no, he patted my shoulder and walked away with this boy. So tonight, he dropped me off at home. It was the night we went back to the park where men meet, and the night he saw Brad there with some other guy." When I read the excerpts, I was absolutely infuriated, so then I got the book because I felt like I just needed to read the whole text and have a context for it. This book has been turned into a movie, and it was a PG-13 movie. And I mean, I think it kind of has an interesting plot, and that's why I think it's been popularized. But trust me, none of those things could have been put in there and be called a PG-13 movie. And why would we have our kids read this kind of stuff is beyond me. I immediately went out to the CDC website because I think one of the things I'm most concerned about for children is just how this kind of behavior promotes and normalizes sexual behavior that is just high, high risk. And on the CDC website, there are four items that they say. It says, "What activities can put me at risk for both STDs and HIV?" Here are the four. Having anal, vaginal, or oral sex without a condom. Those behaviors were all included in this book. Number two, having multiple sex partners. Included in this book over and over and over. Number three, having anonymous sex partners. You just heard about it. They're in parks, just meeting people anonymously. And fourth, having sex while under the influence of drugs and alcohol can lower inhibitions and result in greater sexual risk-taking. Included over and over and over in this book. I am disgusted. I'm disgusted that anything like this would be in our classrooms. We met with an assistant principal at Hempstead, and she indicated that there is a curriculum committee that is formed, usually happens on a seven-year rotation, but that's really where the book made it. I mean, I feel where the filters need to be to stop this from coming in because once it's passed the curriculum committee, I think the teachers feel like, hey, it's been okayed, I'm good to go using it. I still don't feel comfortable that a teacher would even choose to use this book, even if it made through the curriculum committee, but I just really feel that that's where we need our filters to be at. I know if I put these excerpts, if they were passed in my email system at work, it would be condemned, it would be stopped, and I would be pulled into our human resources department immediately for creating some sort of a sexual harassment setting. So if it's not good for our business people, it can't be good for our children. I very much agree with the policy that Jody gave, but I also wanted to see something done at the curriculum level where this is going to be filtered out. We put some sort of filters in place. Thank you.
I'm Cindy Davis, 257 Hill Street. And I also want to lend my support to Jody's proposal. I am a mother of three kids in Dubuque schools. I have an 11th grader, I have a 9th grader, and I have a 4th grader. And I guess the thing that I would like to contribute to the discussion, hopefully in a respectful way, is that I believe that kids are going to be harmed by the reading of this material. You know, when physicians take the Hippocratic oath, even though the words may not be explicitly stated, the general ethical principle behind it is first, do no harm. And although teachers don't necessarily take a Hippocratic oath, I'd like to believe that most, if not all, teachers still abide by that underlying moral ethical principle of that they don't desire to harm their students. And I believe that. I'm not going to assign sinister motives to teachers that are using this book. I just think possibly they have not considered the idea that there may be some students who are harmed by this. And so I want to highlight three different groups of kids who I think will be harmed by this material. First group are those who are sexually abused and exploited. I think in Jody's proposal, she indicated that there are kids, she's talked to counselors who deal with sexual trauma, and they have told her that there are students who, after being exposed to material like this, are having to re-enter counseling. They are engaging in self-harm like cutting and different things because this is so overwhelming, having to relive the pain and trauma that they have already experienced. This material is revictimizing them in many ways. And I want that to just sink in for a minute. Because of material that is presented in a classroom, kids are having to seek out the services of a professional therapist. First, do no harm. The second group that I feel can be harmed from this material are the sexually curious. These are kids who probably haven't been victimized, but Jennifer just read all of the stuff that's in there. And there is absolutely a direct correlation between exposure and thinking and behavior. It's the reason why companies spend millions of dollars to buy a 30-second Super Bowl ad, because they know if they can expose you to something for even less than a minute, it is likely to impact your thinking and your behavior. And I think the behaviors that are outlined in this book, as you see on your guidelines from the CDC, are very high-risk behaviors. And the consequences for those behaviors are never brought up in the book, even though in real life, they can have disastrous, sometimes even catastrophic, consequences. And so I believe that those groups of kids who are hearing some of this and thinking about some of this are going to want to try some of this, and it can be very harmful. The third group, I believe, are what I will call the sexually innocent. I'm not naive enough to think that there aren't kids who are well-aware of all of this stuff, and I'm sure that some of them have had deep knowledge of these kinds of behaviors since they were five. And some of them, many of them possibly, are even practicing this type of behavior. But there are other students who are not. There are actual parents out there like me who work very hard to put filters on our internet. There are parents out there who don't let their kids go to drunken parties. There are parents out there who don't allow their kids to see rated R movies because of the content in them. And exposing them to this kind of material that they have probably never been exposed to before is incredibly harmful. I would have been one of those kids in high school because I was raised in a really godly Christian home. I would not have been aware of any of this, and there is no way I would have told my mom that I was reading a book like this. There is no way because I would have been so ashamed of it. There's no way I would have gone up to a teacher and said, "I find this objectionable." I would have been too embarrassed. And so today, I want to speak out on behalf of those kids. Those kids who aren't aware of all of this kind of trash that's out there. And I want to advocate for them. And I think in conclusion, I would say that we've heard a lot in this last presidential election about how people were lamenting the guttural tone of the dialogue. And I think there were a lot of people that were outraged at some of the sexually graphic, explicit, disgusting comments that were made, and rightfully so. But the reality is, when kids are being exposed to this all the time, what else do you expect from people? This is the culture that gets created. If we truly want the dialogue to be elevated out of the gutter, then we need to stop throwing our kids in this cesspool of filth because that is going to become normal to them. So again, I just ask that you will consider with compassion the kids who are sexually abused, the kids who are sexually curious, and the kids who are sexually innocent. And I'm asking you to protect those kids and first, do no harm. Thank you.
My name is Bob Schultz. I live at 2523 Millstone Drive. I just want to express my concern about the book, Wallflower. I feel like we have a lot of filters in place to protect our kids. I'm all for freedom of speech, but we have rules and laws for tobacco, for alcohol, for magazines. We have ratings for television now, certainly movies that we all know about. Music gets a sticker now if they use a bad word on the album. So it was disappointing to learn that this was being handed to kids in schools when, yes, freedom of speech is a good thing and a right of adults, but I feel for children, we need to have something in place in our schools that we're not handing this to kids as required reading because of the content. Regardless of the positives that might be throughout the rest of the book, I did not read the book, just being honest with you. I did read the excerpts and was floored, absolutely floored. I was a pretty naive kid growing up, not because it was a big faith-based home, but more just because I just was, I was clueless. And we didn't have anything like that when I was a kid growing up in school. And again, normalized has been a word that I've heard the last few times in here, and I feel like if we're putting that in 16, 17, 18-year-olds' hands, it does normalize it and it does make it acceptable. And I don't know what the intent of the book is, but my hope is, as so many of us as parents try to, as best we can, in this day and age with the internet, protect our kids as long as possible from being sexually active. This sort of material, I feel, takes them in the wrong direction and encourages that. And so, you know, I'm all for Jody's proposal. Again, I'm not a book-banning guy. I'm all for freedom of speech, but I really feel that is for us as adults and that all of the other filters are in place to protect our children. And so my hope is that you guys would consider that. There's millions of books out there. Whatever the positive intent of this book is, I would hope that there's something else out there that we can use to get the educational benefit, whatever it is from this book, to our students. Thank you.
Steve Sass, 420 Bradley Street. I have a senior in high school, Emma Sass. Actually, you gave a shout-out to her. The majority of the teachers that we've had in the district have been very good about notifying us of objectionable material like this. I was aware of the nature of the book. It was pretty uncomfortable when she was reading that. You all turned red. But I think that a written policy from the school board... But I think that a written policy from the school board would be an excellent step of leadership that would give a lot of clarification to teachers and really take the burden off of them. So I fully support that. I think it'd be a good leadership move on your part.
Hi, I'm Nancy Bilo at 16633 Clay Hill Road. I grew up in Dubuque, although now I live in the county. And graduating in '73, my husband in '72, we were both appalled, and he said, "This is nothing but pornography. We would have been kicked out of school for this." So I thoroughly support Jody. We would like even more for you to put in place, so again, just like the gentleman said, so our teachers don't have to wonder what can we teach. Let's have guidance from the board. Like all of us, we want America to be great, bring up our standards that have been going downhill for a long time. I appreciate your help with this.[668.62][668.62](APPLAUSE)
Hi. Julie Temporley, 2955 St. Anne. I do not support the book. My daughter is a ninth-grade senior. She's a little on the immature side when it comes to worldliness, and I wouldn't even want her exposed to it. Even if she was in a senior in high school, I don't even see the literary benefits that they would get from it. The book's not even challenging. I couldn't even get through it because I was starting to interpret it as porn. And I've seen, at my age, the damages that porn has done to all age groups straight across the board, and I do not support this book. I do support Jody's proposal.
Last call.
Do you want the study from the NIH?
That would be great. Yeah, we'll get it up.
Move to the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
I'd like to start, and again, tonight's not designed to do much more than listen, but I certainly want to thank everyone for coming and participating in what makes us a better school district by sharing your vantage points as parents and concerned citizens and community members. So I do want you to know that we take the community portion of our name very seriously. And there are really two avenues that we'll progress as a district from here. The first is the specific case of this book. So when a reconsideration request is made, there's a very specific policy process for that. And so one of the little steps would be for a committee to meet, and the committee is outlined in the policy. So it's not some school folks, but it's also some parents like yourself drawn from site councils and students elected or selected by the student-governing body. So that process has begun, trying to identify all the participants is a little bit more time-consuming than you'd hope because it's not all, by nature, picked by, you know, hand-picked by the superintendent. It is meant to give a voice to a larger group, and so that's taking a little bit more time to generate apparently, particularly parent volunteers through the site council. So there will be a meeting, an organizational meeting sometime between now and next Tuesday to sort of organize that committee, to give the folks in the committee a copy of the book, copy of the materials presented for reconsideration and the reasons there, you know, why it's being considered. Then a second meeting will be held probably a week or so later after everybody in the committee's had an opportunity to read the book. And you'll have another opportunity, just like tonight, to come and talk to that committee about that specific book. So that's one avenue that is, that process has begun. So we will continue to follow that process to its conclusion, and that committee can make some decisions about that particular book. The other thing that I heard repetitively tonight, and I think Jody kind of instituted some of that, was desire for the board to look at policy. And so the board does have a subcommittee focused on policy, that means on a monthly basis. I'm sure this will be on our next agenda to talk about policy and how that policy is interpreted, well enacted, interpreted, and put into place. So really, two things going forward that we'll keep you informed of. One, specific to this book directly because that's what our policy says we need to do. And then, secondly, looking at policy around selection of materials and parent notification and all the, you probably saw me taking a lot of notes, so trying to get the flavor for what you were saying. I appreciate the handouts. It helps me remember what my notes say. But really want to, again, just end this portion by thanking you for being here. That might sound strange, but truly, we do value your input. We do talk all the time about parental involvement in education is what will make this school district go from being a good school district to be a great school district. And tonight was a great example of concerned community coming forward and sharing their thoughts, beliefs, and research with the board tonight. So again, thank you for that.
Thank you.[981.13][981.13](APPLAUSE)
And you are all invited to stay for the next hour and a half.[987.13][987.13](LAUGHTER)
Move the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any board members wishing to remove any items from that consent agenda for separate Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, that brings us to Facility Support Services Committee report, Mr. Batine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few motions this evening begin with, "I move the Board of Education approve the early retirement health insurance incentive for teachers, counselors, nurses as submitted."
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the early retirement health insurance incentive for teachers, counselors, nurses as submitted. Mr. Kramer, are you a couple of comments? Perfect, thank you.
All right, Mr. Ryan Gantz. Yeah, this is, you know, we get to the time of year of the looking at retirement and the policies that we have. Some confusion around this is there is policy related to the early retirement continues. It's in the center of policy. We follow it. The insurance piece is one part, though, that each year we bring forth. I think years ago, it was taken out in-
We've been doing this for about four or five.
Four or five years. And so the, what you have in there, what you are looking at approving is just basically related to the insurance part of early retirement, and it talks about the, what the district could contribute towards an individual plan and a monthly contribution for a family plan that's in there, and that is available to people who qualify for the early retirement and up to age 65, when, at this time, Medicare is still available for people. So any questions or anything related to that?
I would just like to add one thing. The reason we have an early retirement incentive is because we use it sometimes as a budget control measure. It's not just an opportunity, it is an opportunity to, as much as we hate to entice our more senior staff because many of them are fantastic teachers, it is an opportunity for us to often look at our budget. We know that retiring teacher versus their replacement tends, or at least last year averaged about $33,000 per retiree and their replacement, which, you know, when you impact maybe an additional 20 teachers or so, it's pretty easy to do the math and see that that's, you know, well over $600, almost $700,000 in budgetary savings. So that's the emphasis around having early retirement.
Ed, you might remember, a couple of years ago, we also, along with this, added some additional compensation at certain time in the year. And again, Mr. Ryan Gantz is right. It's obviously, it's something that is, can be favorable for the district in terms of the budget, and that was at a point in time where we needed to try and find as much as we could. So, questions?
Yeah. I was kind of hoping that when this was brought up, that maybe a little inflation was taken into consideration, like the increase of health costs. There was an increase in this benefit, I think, three years ago.
Correct.
By, I think, $50 a month. Health insurance costs, it's really unsure what they're going to be. And actually, another aspect that's kind of a little disappointing to me is that we expect our retirees to notify the district by February 1st whether they plan on retiring or not. And this health insurance thing is a big thing as far as teachers, coaches, or coaches, counselors, and nurses retiring. It's a big factor, I think. I've been told that by many. So they have that February 1st deadline. They don't know for sure what type of benefit they're going to be receiving from us, and then we, and we don't know the, what the costs are going to be-
Correct.
-until February, and for some plans, even March. So it's kind of a tough situation that we're in here, I think, the deadline and everything.
I hope we could do something different.
Yeah, and I would just remind everybody, it's not a defined benefit for the school district. It's something that we try to use to either entice, or I suppose you could look at it to say we're discouraging early retirement because that health insurance piece that we talk about is maybe sometimes more generous than other times. But I don't know that there's a requirement on our behalf to have that be a set amount and then subsequently have, in all due respect, any relation to how healthcare costs are changing. It's really not intended to be that, is my understanding.
Right, that's correct.
It's really trying to, some, unfortunately, as the superintendent said, it's, we get into some budgetary issues where it's, you know, it's the last resort is to go to our best, our most tenured people, our most qualified teachers, and ask them to jump into that retirement stage a little bit earlier than we can because of the cost savings, and that's unfortunate.
And it has been occasionally, not often, but occasionally where we've re-looked at this in February as we find out what the budgetary needs of the district are and what some of those costs are. We have a relatively early date in mid-February where our teachers have to determine if they're going to retire because the competition is and is getting more fierce for teachers. I mean, if we have a physics teacher or, you know, someone like that retire, we better be pretty quick to the pool in order to be able to find a replacement because what used to be difficult is today scarce and beyond. The future in some of those positions is pretty scary. So the earlier we can be out searching, the better. So that's part of the, part of the timing piece, but-
And we've upped that up by one month. I think last year, last year was in December, I think.
Correct.
December's meeting.
Well, we put the information out a month earlier, but we didn't change the deadline by when a teacher has to tell us. I was really talking to the deadline to say, okay, we need to know by this date so we can get out and find that replacement, hopefully before our competition does.
Any other conversation? Thank you, Mr. Kramer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Move the Board of Education approve the district's submission of the request to the School Budget Review Committee in the amounts of $286,202 for open enrollment out and $65,320 for LEP instruction beyond five years, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following DE audit review in modified supplemental amount.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the district's submission of the request to the School Budget Review Committee as read. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Prove the Board of Education approve the Alliant Energy commercial new construction rebate proposal for senior high school.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the Alliant Energy commercial new construction rebate proposal for senior high school. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Move the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the senior high school bus drop-off lane project and authorized payment of final project cost to McDermott Excavating in the amount of $13,426.10 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law as more fully outlined in the submitted authorization, excuse me, authorizing resolution.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the final acceptance of the senior high school bus drop-off lane project and authorized payment of final project cost to McDermott Excavating as read. Any discussion? Other than it's working really good?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve change order number two to McLean Excavating on the transportation parking improvement projects in the increased amount of $17,815.60.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number two to McLean Excavating on the transportation parking improvements project in the increased amount of $17,815.60. Any discussion?
I'll just make note, I think this had to do with the soils bill. Is that correct?
I'm sure.
You run it, yeah.
I'm sure.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the 10-year facility plan as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 10-year facility plan as submitted. Any discussion?
I guess I would just mention that largely this board has constituted, put this plan into place a little over five years ago. Is it about five years?
Yep.
And it has been the, you know, benchmark for all of our capital investments, and it's one that we're very proud of, and we've seen the improvements in the district. And having a plan like this has made it possible for us to not only achieve what we have, but look out into the future and make the proper improvements to our facilities. So I thank the board for their good and solid work.
It's a great communication tool with citizens, too, because they know what we're doing with their money, essentially.
And Ed, this action just demonstrates that it's constantly reviewed. It's not just, we did approve it five years ago, but it's not, it's not in a constant state. It's always been reviewed and modified as conditions change.
I just wanted to point out for the folks viewing at home that this proposal took, you know, 30 seconds to read or so, but the reality is, there was a two-hour, there was a two-hour work session, there was a lot of work that went into the two-hour work session, and then it was reviewed against Support Services last week. So multiple, many hours into that plan, not just approval tonight, but many hours of work on the behalf of the board, and so they understand it very well, and so they know exactly what they're approving.
Great, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Move that the Board of Education approve naming the Kennedy Elementary School multipurpose room the Willoughby multipurpose room in honor of former longtime principal Dave Willoughby.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve naming the Kennedy Elementary School multipurpose room the Willoughby multipurpose room in honor of former longtime principal Dave Willoughby. Any discussion? Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. All right, that brings us to new business. Oh, I'm sorry, program. And programs.
Um, nothing really new to report. We just did preliminary discussions on school calendar. We looked at a couple new policies and updating review and revisions on some existing policies, and that was it.
Okay. Thank you. Now we'll go to new business.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution appointing paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of same.
Second. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Second. Still second.
Yeah. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution appointing paying agent, bond registrar, transfer agent, approving the paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of same. Discussion item, this is in connection with the, with the bond issuance, I believe, so.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barton.
Aye.
Mr. Batine.
Aye.
Mr. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Prohaska.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Seager.
Aye.
Ms. Whitman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education place on file and approve the form of tax exemption certificate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education place on file and approve the form of the tax exemption certificate. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Batine.
Here. Yes.
You're here? Are you really here?
Not here.
Sorry, the habits die hard.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Prohaska.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Seager.
Aye.
Ms. Whitman.
Aye.
Mr. Barton.
Aye.
In with us, we're all in.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of issuance and securing the payment of $10 million in school infrastructure sales service and tax revenue bonds, Series 2016, of the Dubuque Community School District, State of Iowa, under the provisions of Chapter 423E and 423F of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said bonds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of issuance and securing the payment of $10 million school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2016, of the Dubuque Community School District, State of Iowa, under the provisions of Chapters 423E and 423F of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said bonds.
Probably just would point out that we don't borrow $10 million every month. That this is, obviously, we work with our financial advisor at Piper. And they help us balance the facilities plan that we just saw that includes projects, like the senior project that we're underway right now, and looking at the expected outflows of that as well as the tax inflows that are coming in. And try to keep Mr. Keller her positive and head above water, right? Could that be a safe, okay, that'd be a safe summary. All right.
I just want to make one comment.
Please.
Board President, I was talking to our financial advisor, and we ended up on the very good side of this last bond issuance because in the last week, he said the market has gone up 4 tenths of a point. So we were very fortunate. It saved us about $300,000 in total payouts just by doing this at the time we did. So we got lucky on this one.
No, Mr. Keller, that's just, that's skill and timing. It's not luck. All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Prohaska.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Seager.
Aye.
Ms. Whitman.
Aye.
Mr. Barton.
Aye.
Mr. Byteen.
Still here and aye.
Thank you. That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the American Education Week proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded